All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Warwick Town Hall for the July 17th Town of Warwick Planning Board Meeting. Please address the flag. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, anyone who is here that is wishing to address the board for public comment, please come forward to the desk here. And there is a sign-in sheet. You can sign up and everybody will get a chance to speak in order of their signup. So please come up if you would like to speak. Okay, so we will open with the first order of business tonight on the agenda, Warwick HG LLC. It's a continued public hearing from June 5th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. Application for Site Plan Approval and Special Use Permit for the Expanded Construction and Use, Number 75 of a previously approved campground's use and operation from 74 permitted campsites, formerly known as Black Bear Campground, and now known as Serenity Ridge at Warwick Campground, to 130 campsites, along with various other typical modern campground amenities. The amenities include, but are not limited to roadway improvements, an entrance gate, pavilion, playground, recreation areas, and wading pool. It's situated on Tax Parcel Section 8, Block 2, Lot 27.14. The project is located on the eastern side of Wheeler Road, 1,400 feet south of Dustin Berry Drive, at 197 Wheeler Road in the RU Zone of the Town of Warwick, County of Orange, State of New York. Now we will go to discuss the seeker, Max. It's all yours.
So this application has been the board since November of last year. I'm sorry, this is the wrong application I had in front of me. This is, yep, this one, we have received a Part III Environmental Assessment Form from the applicant. We believe that additional environmental analysis needs to be conducted. We have provided a memo to the board with respect to the additional analysis that needs to be provided. So at this point, we are recommending that you do not make a determination of environmental significance on the application until that outstanding information is received.
Okay, I have a couple other comments here before I get, we get started on the discussion of the project that are pertinent to anyone who wants to speak. So obviously, as I said before, if you wish to speak, you must register at the signup sheet here in the front. All speakers will be limited to two minutes. All comments shall be directed at the board, not at the applicant or anybody else. You will address us here on the podium. Since the environmental review is incomplete, no determination will be made tonight concerning the application. So after that, comment number two, the applicant will come up and discuss the project.
Good evening. I'm Brad Cleverly from MJS Engineering and Land Surveying PC. MJS Engineering is here to represent the Serenity Ridge at Warwick Project. I'm Brad Cleverly. I'm the President of the firm. I'm also a professional engineer and licensed in New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. Wanda Jesus is our project manager, and he's been intimately involved in this project. We also have here this evening two represent, two from Warwick HG LLC, the applicant, Charles Ferrugia, the owner, and also Thomas Vega, another owner. We also have project attorney Ronald Kozar here with us tonight. Attorney Ronald has more than 50 years' experience in zoning, land use planning, and development. A little bit of background on this project. This site has operated as Black Bear Campground for more than 40 years. The Town of Warwick's Comprehensive Plan states that its goal is to accommodate new growth with the least impact on the environment and to preserve Warwick's natural beauty and its rural quality of life. This campground was established prior to the Comprehensive Plan, which was drafted in 1987. However, it does fit within this goal. The campground blends into the countryside with its abundance of old trees and with minimal impact to the environment. The applicant is now seeking Site Plan Approval and Special Use Permit for the Expanded Use and Construction on the 51.5 acre parcel along Wheeler Road, County Route 41. The site is located directly south of the Village of Florida. The site is located in the Warwick RU Rural Zoning District and also the Warwick Ridgeline Overlay RLO District. The applicant began with an existing functioning 74-site campground, which is operating at this time. Our goal with this expansion is to create a functional layout to match with the land's characteristics and the project's intended purpose. Wanda Jesus, the project manager, will now show us how we are able to accomplish this goal.
So we can just start out by talking a little bit about the site design, some of the goals and practices that were implemented on this site. We wanted to make this expansion without disturbing any of that bucolic country natural feeling that already has on this site and in this neighborhood. So to start us off, we'll show how we accomplished this. We were able to accomplish this by conforming to the town's campground requirements. We were able to include the 74 existing sites, which are shown here in, oops, there we go, which are shown here on the map in this green color. And then we were able to add the additional 54 sites, which are shown here in blue on the map. Can you hit escape for me, Tom? Okay, those 56 proposed sites for a total of 130 campsites. We were able to do this without requesting any variances from the town. So many of you might be familiar with the common practices of today with many other developers. They come through, they completely clear a site, they remove all of the trees, and then they develop that property to the maximum extent possible. This is not what we wanted to do with this site. So as you see here on the plan, we did not do that. Of the 51 and a half acres of the site, we are only disturbing roughly seven acres of the property. So that's only 14% of this total property. It's very minimal. The majority of the trees, they're going to remain undisturbed. And the campsites, if you look at the map here, you're able to see that they're actually clustered together. So they're clustered together just to really minimize the amount of disturbance that's going to happen on this property. We could have spread them out throughout the site, but we did not do that here. So with this proposed site plan, we were able to meet or exceed the required property line campsite setback of 100 feet for all of the property lines. So if you're looking at this map here, you're going to see this, these two yellow lines, the bolder one to the outer of the property, that is the property line. And then inside, this is the property line setback, that 100-foot setback that we aren't supposed to build in. And as you see here, these red sites, all in red, those are the actual campsites. So none of the campsites are within that 100-foot setback. If you look at that setback area, there's a lot of green space, there's trees, there's shrubs, because there's nothing in there. We didn't put any of the sites, we didn't put any of the amenities in that 100-foot setback area. And when you look at any site, really, where you have the most visual impact to a site would be along the roadway. So as you're looking along the roadway here on Wheeler Road, you'll actually notice that the closest campsite to the road is actually Site Number 35. That's over 400 feet away from the road. So there's a large buffer area before you actually get to these sites here. And this buffer, like we were saying, it's full of mature trees, which will obscure the view of the sites from the road. And we actually did prepare a visibility assessment plan for this, just to talk you through it a little bit. On this plan, we have the actual locations, let me zoom in a little more for you. We have the actual locations of the tree lines. It's kind of like this U, the squiggly line here. So if you just look at this viewpoint one, if you look at where that actual boundary starts, it's about 175 is where the tree starts, and then the trees go all the way back to 350, some grassy areas. There's a RV site at 700 feet, and then at 725 to 825, we have more trees in there. So there's still a lot of these trees remaining in that area. And just to make that easier to visualize, we actually made a profile of this. So what you're looking at here, there's this light gray line. That's actually showing the existing elevations, existing grades, the slope of the property. This is what is out there today, and these are the existing trees. So like we had said, you know, starting about 175 here, we have trees, and that continues to about 350. Those are where those existing trees are. You'll also see these RVs that are coming to the site. They're only 14 and a half feet tall. They're not big in themselves. The trees here, these trees, you know, 40, 50, 60 feet, they're really going to obscure this view from the road. There's even a car here. This is where the car is and where the actual grading of the road would be. And you actually get to see where those sites fall into. We did the same thing for both the pavilion and as well as that bath house that is being proposed at this time. You're able to see those views. So just all in all, you're able to see the trees and to see those large buffer areas that are being provided. These sites, they're also going to be served by wells as well as septic systems. If you're looking at this plan here, you can actually see where we have the wells that are in use. The one closest to the road, it's still over 100 feet off of the road. We have this well. It's the primary well that's being used on this property. It's in use today. And then just for some redundancy, there's a second well here, and that's just there for emergencies. It has a pump. It's working, but it's not the pump that's being used at this time. So in 2014, the sewer, the septic system was approved for 160 sites by the Orange County Health Department, and the current well and septic systems do meet that capacity. The Orange County Health Department has been to the site several times this year, and they have found no inadequacies in the water and sewer systems on site. The septic systems, they all meet the Orange County Septic System requirements. So the Orange County Health Department, they have given our client a campground permit for the year of 2024 already, as well as the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. They have given our client a New York State Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. So this is just given to sites which are in conformance with the United States Clean Water Act. So both the septic systems, so these septic systems have been reviewed and found acceptable by the county and the state. So I did mention these two wells here on the site. These wells have been reviewed by the Orange County Health Department, and they were found acceptable in 2015. So they were, the wells, the septic on this site, it's been reviewed by both state and county agencies. So another thing of importance on the site would be for our pedestrian safety and how the circulation works on the site, how the traffic's going to go. So just to talk a little on it, we didn't do too many changes to the roadway, but there are some minor roadway improvements. And the reason we did that is we just really wanted to keep the vehicles away from the people, from those pedestrians. We also just wanted to minimize the need to turn around or to go in reverse, as well adding to the circulation and the safety of this site here. We also do have an entry gate when you come in here towards the bottom of this plan. And what this gate does, part of it, we'll talk more on it later, but clients or people that come into this site, they're actually going to have to stop, make a complete stop at the gate, and they won't just be able to speed on into the site. So that's adding to the safety there. And then finally, more about that with the traffic. Each of these sites, they do have two parking spaces. That is the requirement from the town. You can actually see those two spots on each of the sites. We do meet that requirement that the town has in place. And then we've even exceeded it throughout this campground. You'll see there are extra parking spaces. There is over 80 of these spaces. So there are an adequate number of parking spaces. And for our client, as well as for the town, safety is of paramount importance. So if you're looking here at these existing sites, they're in green, Sites 51 through 59. They are existing sites. They're there. There's actually a steep slope adjacent to it. And our client is putting in a guide rail system to protect both pedestrians as well as vehicles at these areas. So that's about the circulation. We've also, this project is being done in phases. That's to minimize the amount of disturbance happening at once. And there's various erosion and sediment controls that are proposed to mitigate the effects of ground disturbance. And then for, of course, many people in the area, you think, how is this going to impact me? How will this affect the traffic? So we had Greenman Peterson Incorporated perform traffic assessments at six different intersections near this project. This report is dated April of 2024. So this is a recent report, and it was submitted to the Planning Board for Review. Existing traffic and expected traffic were taken into consideration here. And the results of these assessments were that there would be no significant impact to traffic and that there would be no traffic mitigation required. So you know, in the past, you may have been used to seeing trailers coming in and leaving the site, but that is going to be done away with. It's just going to be passenger vehicles entering the site. So that's just some of the technical details of the site. The owners, they can further explain the use of this site.
Hi, I'm Thomas Vega. I'm part of the ownership, like Juan mentioned prior. I'm also the manager of the campground. I'm Thomas Vega, an owner of the campground. Yeah, I'm an owner of the campground and the manager of the campground currently. I've been on the campground for what's coming on nine months now. And we thought it'd be beneficial for us to provide some additional details in the form of a presentation, giving a bit more background about what we're proposing. I also wanted to introduce Rick Ferrugia, who's part of the ownership as well, and he could give a brief background on himself.
Good evening, everyone. Rick Ferrugia, principal, involved with the campground, along with several other family members. Grown up in real estate development, construction, New Jersey, Somerset County, New Jersey primarily, Warren County, and more recently, Cape May County, New Jersey. So we have a lot of members of this group that have decades of experience. We own a campground in Cape May County, New Jersey. We purchased back in 2017 and did some expansion to that campground as well. It's similar to what we propose here in the way that there are park models, park model units, which we'll introduce. There are an RV that is designed to stay at campgrounds. Years ago, they were called park trailers, but manufacturers today call them park models. Very attractive looking, and they're designed for people who don't want to travel on the roads anymore, either driving a big RV or towing an RV. And they want to continue with the RV vacation lifestyle, but they want to just get in their car, their sedan, SUV, pickup truck, drive up to the campground and have their accommodations there. Some of the amenities I can talk about, if that's all right, Thomas. We, there is a current bath house that is going to be replaced with a brand-new bath house. Is that, that's the bottom of the site. So starting at the bottom of the site, the old barn at the entrance, it shows the gate, the gate entry system, which will be installed right here. There's an old swimming pool that hasn't been used in years. So we're going to construct two pickleball courts on that. And this playground equipment, proposed regular pickleball courts as well as a basketball pool. So this is the full configuration there. Then all the way at the top of the site, this building exists, it's going to have an additional roof covered, open space above that, that building. And then this will be a brand-new pavilion with a woodburn fireplace. These buildings all exist. This is a garage-type of building that is a shed now. And then there is a bath house located right here that will be torn down, removed, and replaced with a beautiful building that a local architect has designed. And then this is the conceptual plan for the swimming pool, which would be now located at the top of the site. This is a park model RV. It comes in on wheels. The wheels stay on. It's plugged in. It's secured in place, just like a conventional drivable RV, which we get coming into the campground all the time now. But it's got a nice appearance, and this is the business model that we propose to transition to. We're permitted right now, under the code, to have park models. They're recognized by the industry as an RV. They're classified. They're built to RVIA standards. So this is the unit that we propose to transition to. The result will be campers, RVs being towed in, driven in, over the next few years will diminish in numbers as we transition to these. So regarding the campground code, it's a 210-day limit to, for a person or group to use that RV. So it precludes people from permanently residing in the campground. Also in the code is that they have to provide us with the proof of their primary address. So that documentation is available for the town if they request it. So we won't have anybody living in the campground as their primary residence. It's against the code. And we have a major investment here between the purchase and the improvements that are proposed to deviate from the code, okay? Allow violations to occur. Campground manager will be there on a daily basis, checking on things, quarterly occupancy reports, which have been required for many, many years, decades. They'll continue to be submitted.
I could touch on the gate system as well. So the gate system will be tracking occupancy of individuals who are utilizing the park models. So what's proposed is there's going to be a vehicle tag on the inside of registered vehicles that will track entry and exit, and a backend software will calculate the number of days in which that vehicle has been within the property bounds. That cumulative total will generate a report, which we provide to the town, that specifies the occupancy per individual. On top of that, the campground manager will be doing daily rounds, just like Rick had mentioned.
So there is a requirement for a license agreement to exist between the campground ownership and a licensee, who is going to purchase a park model and leave it in the campground year-round. And that license agreement has all the terms in it, including meeting all the code requirements of the town, as well as a long list of rules and regulations. So anybody who's in violation can be asked to leave, and they won't be allowed in, and they would be required to sell their park model to someone else. So we have a background check that we propose. That's what we do in Cape May. Everybody who's going to purchase, we have a background check. So we know who's coming in there right now, the way the campground operates. It's impossible to do background checks. You have people coming in from all over. You don't know who's coming in, and this business model of park models ensures everybody knows who's in there. They'll become neighbors, vacation neighbors, and everybody will feel very comfortable knowing who's in the campground. Of course, no children in the public schools. Renting or subleasing is prohibited. So the people who own these park models, they cannot place them on Airbnb or VRBO or any other platform for that matter and rent them out. That's how we run our campground in Cape May, and the owners love it that way. So no rentals at all available. And that's our website. If you wanted to visit Cape Shores Resort down in Rio Grande, New Jersey, Cape May County. So if you want to talk about anything else, it's up next.
Are you guys complete with your discussion then?
We are.
Okay, we'll move on. Before we move on to anything further, I just want to let everyone in the room know who sits at this podium. To my left is Danielle Dreyer. She's from Nelson Pope. She's a town planner. That's Max Stack. He's from Nelson Pope. He's also our head town planner. This is Ms. Temi Palau from HDR Engineering. She's part of our engineering team. This is Laura Barca, directly to my left. She's from HDR Engineering. She is our towns engineer. I'm Roger Showalter. I'm the vice chairman. I'm sitting in for our chairman, Ben Astorino, tonight. He's away on vacation. Lucky Ben. This is our attorney, Bob Kohulich. Next to Bob sits Dennis McConnell. He's a board member that started when I started. Next to Dennis is Connie Sardo. She's our secretary, and a great secretary at that. Next to Connie is Bo Kennedy. Bo is a longtime board member. And our newest board member, sitting next to Bo, is Vicky Garby. And she's going to be a fantastic, she is a fantastic board member and going to do a lot of great things. So to move on, we have to get on our comments to keep this moving. Comment number three, conservation board comments, we have no comments received. Comment number four, the Architectural Review Board comments, we have no comments from the Architectural Review Board. Comment number five, the Orange County Planning Department, they have advisory comments dated January 2nd, 2024. They recommended a traffic study, and they described the minimum driveway requirements, and the interior road should be designated no parking areas. Comment number six, Orange County DPW on March 27th, 24, 2024.
Comment number six, Orange County DPW on March 27th, 24, 2024, uh, had no comments. Comment number seven, Orange County Department of Health. Applicant to provide the most recent Orange County Department Annual, Department of Health annual permit to operate a campground. Permit number is 230259. It expires on December 31st, 2024. Comment number eight, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. The applicant should submit the most recent copy of November 21st, 2014 Speedy's permit, Septic Permit Number 3-3354-00662-0001. It is valid until November 20th, 2024. Comment number nine, Building Department on February 21st, 2024 stated no violations at this time. Comment number 10, applicant to submit a sample of a lease agreement that will be used to confirm no subleasing, no short-term rentals, number of cars allowed per site, outside upkeep of park models, definition for vertical family members, et cetera.
I can report that that's been done.
The attorney reports that it's complete.
Mr. Jew, is that, is that a typo that says, "A sample of a lease agreement shouldn't be a license agreement"? That's what the applicant has made, because it was a word, not a lease agreement, it's a license agreement.
Okay.
The reason I brought that up is that they're often treated differently by courts.
That is noted, Mr. McConnell, for the record. Number 12, the guide rail detail submitted is a timber guide rail, which is not approved by New York State Department of Transportation. Drawings only provide a site plan layout that shows the guide rail schematically. Include updated drawing with dimensions and end treatments. And large plans may be needed to provide further detail. Laura, do you have any comments on that? Did you get anything?
That is, um, that is my comment. He, they, they will be providing that information.
Okay, yep. I made a mistake, everyone. Number 11, the applicant can provide narrative to describe how the proposed gate mechanism will work to manage the use of each campsite, 210-day maximum, and who is using each campsite, i.e. the vertical family members. Okay, number 13, HDR has no additional comments on the traffic impact study submitted. Traffic study was, uh, from April 2024. Number 14, the SWIP narrative states that there will be a permanent stormwater feature, sheet flow to, to filter strips used. The same feature is then also included in the existing watershed information. Applicant to explain how it can be both a proposed and existing feature. Laura, you satisfied with that?
Well, they're, they're going to submit that. They're going to have to submit it.
All right. What I was trying to say is, has there been any submission on it? So, I guess not.
That's a newer comment.
Okay.
From our review of this one.
Okay. Number 15, the applicant to confirm that the site provides slopes within the ranges specified in Section 5.3.2 of the Blue Book. Please also confirm that the maximum, maximum contributing length is 150 feet for pervious surfaces and 75 feet for impervious. Number 16, the applicant shall provide, or to provide, a PDF copy of the ENOI as part of this application. Number 17, add a detail for the proposed pavilion. Materials of construction should be added to the detail. Number 18, a copy of all declarations cited on the drawings and/or part of the previous site plan shall be submitted, example Ridge Line Ag Sheet 1 Note 31. Number 19, applicant to comply with obtaining an annual Building Department permit in compliance of the Town Code and Sheet 1 Note 24. Number 20, the applicant to provide any performance bond or landscaping bond required by the planning board. Number 21, applicant to clarify the status of the site inspection fee for barrier protection near campsites 51 through 59. The previous owner posted this bond. Applicant to clarify the bond has legally, been legally transferred to the new owner. And, uh, on, does this refer to the, number 20?
Dennis believes we're missing.
On the performance bond?
That's pretty standard for what we.
So, I'll edit it, uh, I'll edit it after 21. We'll make it 22. All right, 21, the applicant to clarify the status of the site inspection fee for the barrier protection near campsites 51 through 59. I just read that. Previous owner posted the bond. Applicant to clarify this bond has been legally transferred to the owner. So, and we'll make comment 22. Okay, payment, 22 is, the comment is payment of all fees, and we'll make this 23. No construction until maps are signed. We must add that note to the plan. Okay, so since we are through all the comments, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to, uh, read some notes again. So, to reiterate what I said earlier, if you, uh, well, first, I want to make a comment to all of our friends and the gallery. Please have, um, courtesy to the people who are up and speaking. Please do your best to remain quiet, um, so we can hear everyone, what they're saying. It's a large room, um, so I would really appreciate that courtesy. And if you don't carry out that courtesy, I will ask you to leave. So, it's as simple as that. Please be courteous to your neighbors. So, number one, if you wish to speak, you must register at the sign-up sheet here in the front. If anybody who came late wishes to speak, please come up and sign the sheet. All speakers shall be limited to two minutes. All comments shall be directed to the, to the board here, not at the applicant or anybody else. And comment number four, since environmental view, review is incomplete, no determination will be made tonight concerning this application. So, we will move on to open the public hearing. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor? Motion carried. All right, so now we will open the public hearing. Do we have the list, Connie? Thank you. All right, so first up will be Mr. Russell, Russell Curcio. Sarico, okay.
Uh, this is for the second, uh, after this.
No, so we will, we will let you speak at the second, uh, at the, uh, next application. That's, uh, no problem. Well, this is the way it rolls. I'm sorry, but that's what it is. Okay. Okay, the next, uh, person on the list is Jody Cross.
Two minutes, got it. Good evening, Jody Cross from the firms Zaren and Steinmetz. I'm here on behalf of Giora Niemann LLC. They are the owner of the residential property that adjoins the campground to the east, and they share an approximately 1,900 linear foot boundary with the campground. Been here in the past. We understand that this is a different application from the Black Bear application, but there are a lot, a lot of similarities and a lot of concerns we raised in the past that we continue to raise now. We did submit a letter, so I will be as brief as possible, just to go through some of the salient points. Water and septic, I heard the applicant mention that, uh, DOH and the state has been out there. We, we did foil the records on, on this application. I didn't see anything in the records from DOH or DEC. We remain concerned about the water usage and the fact that there is, um, no empirical data backing up the fact that, uh, there's sufficient water. We also have concerns regarding the onsite septic. There is a history regarding the septic system on the site, effluent, effluent being discharged onto my client's property. Um, we understand that the septic system was approved by the DOH. But we do think that, uh, the town should require the applicant to demonstrate that it's still functioning. It was built as planned and possibly have independent, uh, analysis to determine that it's still functioning the way it should be. We also have concerns regarding, um, lighting. I didn't see a lighting plan. Um, there's structures that are right on, near the 100-foot setback, uh, to my client's property. We want to just make sure that there's not going to be any light trespass. And of course, if structures are going to be lighted, uh, past 10:00 PM, your code requires that those structures be 200 feet setback. So, we would ask then for a condition that if those structures are less than 200 feet, that they can't be lighted past 10 o'clock. In the past, there had been structures within that setback. We acknowledge and thank the applicant for removing, or their predecessors for removing the laundry, uh, facility that was there. We just want to ensure that there are no other pre-existing structures still in the setback. Want to talk about screening? Uh, 164492S requires an opaque screen of plant materials and/or fencing. I know a lot of trees are proposed, but I don't know what the size of those trees are. How quickly are they going to grow? What are they going to be at full height? How long is it going to take for them to mature? The issue is that with all those structures right near the setback and right near my client's property, even if there aren't structures there, nothing's stopping individuals from congregating in that setback area. So, we'd be asking also for a, an opaque privacy, uh, fence along the boundary line to ensure that the, um, the, you know, like I said, uh, individuals congregating in the setback area are not disturbing the property. I defer to my letter. I hope the board has seen it. I believe it's in the record. Uh, just want to point out, this is a type 1 action under SECR and SECR. And, uh, type 1 actions are those actions that are most likely to have a significant environmental impact. Um, even a finding of just one potential for significant environmental impact requires the preparation of an EIS. So, um, I, I expect this board is going to be doing its job and to ensure that if there is the finding that there is a potential for an environmental impact, that an EIS would be prepared. So, thank you. Um, we refer to our letter and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, uh, Mr. James McAtier.
Thank you. James McAtier, Section Block and Lot 7-2-62. I live on Union Corners Road on the east side, a few thousand feet up the road from the proposed project. Full disclosure, uh, I am not an attorney. I've read the code, read the application to the best of my ability. I'm going to raise some concerns that I hope the board looks into, uh, and considers further. Some of the concerns I have, do you want me to read the specific side of the code? Or can I just, uh, name the number for the board to review?
You can name the number for the board to review because we are limited on time.
Thank you. So, first of all, 164-45, non-conforming use, A1A. Alterations are limited to a 15% increase. The proposed project per the long EAF form submitted by the applicant is 76%. Same section F, secession. Um, this refers to mobile homes, which I understand these are not. These are RVs. When the code was written, which is the constitution for the community, that actual code is, as it's written, I'm going to actually read that because I think it's impactful for the board and the community to hear. And while I'm reading that, I'll also say that the recreational, uh, definition in the code does not include park model RVs. It does say, the things that it does list, it says not, not limited to, which means it could include park model RVs. But I believe when the code was written, it did not take park model RVs into consideration. Secession, non-conforming use, which this is. This is a special use in the rural residential zoning. It also has the, uh, or the ridge overlay as part of it as well. Non-con, non-conforming use is specified below is deemed sufficiently objectable, undesirable and out of character in the district in which such use is located as to depreciate the value of other property and uses permitted in the district. And the blight, and blight the proper and orderly development in Jennifer Welfare of such district in the town to the point that each of such non-conforming uses shall be terminated on or before the expiration of the specified period of time after the effective date of this chapter. And one of those uses is, in any district, any non-conforming use of a mobile home may be continued after the effective date of this chapter, provided that no replacement is made of one mobile home for another. By definition, these are not mobile homes. I understand that. But when the code was written, park model RVs did not exist. Mobile homes haven't been manufactured since 1974. They became, uh, manufactured homes. Manufactured homes are regulated by the Housing and Urban Development Department. These are manufactured as, as the applicant stated by the RV Association. Furthermore, uh, 164-49.2, Campgrounds, Section L, uh, requires two means of entrance and exit. There's only one on this county road. I know that the planning board can provide an exception. Just want to make sure that the planning board's considering that, uh, in their application process. Furthermore, the applicant stated that background checks are completed as anyone who would purchase one of these. I actually spoke to the campground down in Cape May, New Jersey today. The only background check that's completed is a credit background check to make sure the applicant is affluent enough to purchase one of these. The RVs that are in Cape May also have 800 square feet. I'd like the board to either ensure or consider to make sure that park model RVs by definition are limited to 400 square feet. The way that they're able to get around that in Cape May, New Jersey, which I have illustrations of. We have not seen what they're proposing here. They have added on sunrooms that are not considered living space, making the total size of the unit that they sell from 400 square feet to 800 square feet, making them immovable and look more like the trailers that people would be concerned about.
Mr. McAtier, uh, you have exceeded the time limit. So, I would ask you to, um, submit the rest of your comments. It sounds like you have some pretty detailed comments. Please submit them in writing to our secretary in the office.
Uh, respectfully, can I request more time or borrow someone else's that might be on the list?
No. No, we have to, we have to go through the list. Let every, otherwise you're going to be here till like midnight, so.
But if other people.
It's only fair. Other people.
If other people forego their time.
Ma'am, we will, and the lady who just hollered at me, he's pointing out important facts. Yes, he is. But we will, we have reams of paper. We will be very happy, I do a lot of reading, on, on all of the applicant's subjects. We will be very happy to read them all. We need to keep them, we have other items on the agenda, ma'am. We have to keep them.
Mr. Showalter, I only have, I only have two, I have two more.
No, no, that's, it's over. I'm sorry, it's over. You got to move on because we have other people on the list, all right? Next is Heather Moran from Big Island Road. Man, Moran, okay.
Uh, I'll just make it quick. Um, I'm just confused because I looked on the old Black Bear website and it has their little park map, which shows 150 sites. And if you go on their website and you look at the pictures, you can see that at various times, they've taken pictures of people occupying those sites. So, I'm confused as to this 75, 130. However, maybe it's something to do with the size of these park model RVs because I don't think they're going to fit on the 150 sites that seem to be in use right now. But maybe if you add another 50 sites or so on there, you'll be able to fit all these bigger 800-square foot.
Well, that was then, ma'am. This is, that was Black Bear. The applicant has a new plan, which.
Which has 150 sites that are in use and are, you can look at the satellite photos.
It is a different plan.
Okay.
Next on the list is Dan Harder.
Thank you to the board for hearing me. My name's Daniel Harder. I live at 2L with Harder Road, which cross the street from Joseph Road, which butts up against the backside of Black Bear Campground. I want to know if I could give my, rest of my two minutes to, uh, James McAtier. And evidently you made that clear to that, no.
No.
So, my main concern is my tax base. How is this going to help my tax base? I can't see it helping my tax base. I could see it costing me money because when you double the size of anything, it's going to cost more for law enforcement, police, fire. going to cost more for law enforcement, police, fire, ambulance, and not to mention, who's going to enforce the laws or the rules and regulations of this campsite when they're not being enforced? Is it going to be the planning board? Is it going to be the code enforcement officer? Or is it going to be the police? Okay? Also, smoke. Number of times, I've heard complaints about smoke coming from the campgrounds, to the point where they were going to call the fire department. When you roll the fire department, it costs money. Numerous times, I told them, it's just from the campgrounds. But now you're going to double it, so you're going to have more people smelling the smoke. Right? I can't understand why they can't go with propane, fire, smoke, smoke this place, fire pits. Also, the concern was raised on the one-way-in, one-way-out. If there's an emergency in that campground, there's only going to be one-way-in, one-way-out. There's not going to be an alternate route. Not to mention the fact that there's no fencing around the whole campground. So if people walk through the woods, they're going to have access to my backyard and to the backyard of people that neighbor the campgrounds. Okay? And I can't understand why they're replacing one bathhouse when they're going to, when they're going to double the size of the campground. Shouldn't they have two bathhouses? Why just one? And Cape May is a great place for campground. You have something there. What do you have here? Farmland, it used to be farmland. Now, it's mostly residential area. There's very few leftover farms. And in closing, the picture that they showed at the campsite in the site locations, looks to me like a storage unit. Thank you.
I'll comment on that Mr. Harder said regarding enforcement. As far as the enforcement goes, the building department will do the enforcement. There will be an annual permit for each park model, and if one breaks the rules, the permit will not be renewed, and will have to shut down for the entire campground. So I think the, you know, the enforcement is very strict, and we understand, the board understands, and this is why we have everyone here tonight, to voice their concerns and to listen to their concerns. So nothing is set in stone to my audience, and this is why we do this. Everybody has a voice. Unfortunately, has to be done tonight quickly, because we have a lot of people who want to speak. So we'll move on. Robert Sherman is the next speaker.
All right, good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of simple questions that concern to the school in the area to Seward. I know they say there's not supposed to be any children of school age there that would attend the public school, because they are supposed to have, or in the background check, prove that they have a permanent residence, and this is just part-time, vacation, weekend, whatnot. There is a law out there, I'm not, I'm sure not everyone is familiar with, called McKinney-Vento Law. It's a federal law, that if they come in and they say they've lost their primary residence, this is now their residence. Anywhere from just saying, "This is our residence, we don't have a home, we could be homeless, this is where we have to stay," the school district that they fall within has to accept those children into the district by federal and state law. So at that point, it will cost the district, on average, of about $25,000 per student. Now, we will get, the school does get some supplemental money, but it doesn't cover it all. So does the owner or the corporation have a proactive plan to back that up? If they fall in that situation where someone claims homelessness, or this is now their primary residence, because they lost their other one, they have to live here, we have to, and we should educate the students or the children there. But now, that cost, a majority of it, will fall possibly on taxpayers. So that's, that's a main question I have concerning this project and the district within it. So, all right, thank you.
Comments are noted. Thank you, Rob. Next on the list is Alex Kokat.
So I'm Alex Kokat. I'm a four-generation onion producer, been here for many, many years. Reason I'm here is I'm on Big Island Road. I don't know if a lot of you guys and ladies are aware of the digging and the trenching of the Quaker Creek this past winter, that we're always struggling for, about the drainage and all the runoff that comes from all these developments and all these plans and all these great things that they call progress. But nobody ever thinks about the runoff, what comes from these pavements and these driveways and these roofs and everything else that comes our way, that we always have to deal with, because we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to keep our drainage ways clear. Nobody ever seems to say, "Hey, you know what? You're draining all this land, you're draining all the Florida village, you're draining the town of Warwick, big parts of town of Warwick, coming through the black dirt." Nobody ever really donates any money or gives any money, grants any money for us. This past project was paid for specifically only by the farmers, because nobody else would, would come up with anything else. So, all this project, this project seems, oh yeah, seems great and everything else. Park models, hmm, looks like a glorified motorhome, if you ask me. I didn't, I didn't think that the motorhomes and mobile, mobile home parks were allowed in town of Warwick. I mean, I thought that was kind of written in stone, so now all of a sudden, they come up with this fancy name of a park model. I don't know. It seems like something that may metamorphosize into something else down the road, you know, obviously, you know, they're going to try to go by the rules and try to satisfy all you, all you, all you great people here, they're trying to do the best for the town of Warwick. But I think in, in, in the, in the long run, you know, I mean, okay, who knows if they're going to get approved by, by you guys or anything else, but when it boils right down to it, what happens in five years? What happens in 10 years to this, to this, what they call a campground? To me, that's not a campground. That's, that's a permanent, eventually a permanent living for someone. Some, 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 some people, someplace are going to be there, and, you know, it'll metamorphosize into a 365 days a year, because like, like Bob was saying, well, all of a sudden, somebody loses, lose their, their primary residence, they're going to wind up being there. So, so they're going to be granted some sort of approval, so, okay, well, a variance of some sort, so they could stay there. And then it becomes something else on top of something else. So a campground, to me, is when people come in for the weekend or for a week, they, they, they got Class A's, Class Bs, goose necks, trailers, and they bring in, and they, they camp out there for the weekend or whatever, and they leave. These park models, they're, 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 they're not, they're not, they're not RVs. The man said they're 14'6" high. 13'6" is your maximum RV height. That's, that's where you can go through and pull something out and pull something in. When they're there, they're there permanently. So, I don't know, you guys can make your decisions of what you want to do, but it's up to me. I would say, okay, you want to have a campground? You have a campground. You have mobile homes, not mobile homes, you have, you have trailer houses, you have campers, you have pop-ups, whatever, people that come in for recreational for the weekend. That's what I think.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Kokat. Next on the list is Jeff Stron, Stron Snyder from Sleepy Valley Road. Am I close on that name, or did I mess it up bad?
Not the worst I've ever heard. Good evening, board. My name's Jeff Stru Snyder. I live on Sleepy Valley Road, as you already read off. I guess my concern from the application is just that it's not a campground, or won't be a campground in two years when all the park model trailers are installed. As the previous speaker from the gallery said, a campground is something, a place where you go for a short period of time. I camp. I have a travel trailer. I tow it all over creation. I leave the campground once I've enjoyed the place I've visited. I just don't see that what we're, what we're, what the applicant is going to build here is a seasonal community for snowbirds, it seems. I just think the definition of campground as being, is not clear. It's more of a resort, is all I have to say.
Okay, Jeff, thank you for your comment. Next up is, I won't mess this one up, Patty Rotella. That's an easy one.
I have more questions than I hope you can answer. I just have concerns about, first of all, the burning of the wood. That, to me, that's a big concern. They talk about saving trees, yet they're going to burn wood in fire pits. I, I think they, it should be mandatory to have propane there. That's just my opinion. Some of my questions are, they say they have water through wells, is that going to be sufficient for the number of sites they're proposing? I don't, I don't know. I, I really, it really is a question. Currently, how many sites are operated there? And how long are those people staying? In other words, are they there, as the previous person said, are they there for two weeks, or are they there for three months? To me, I agree with him. A campsite is a campsite where you go and you're only there for a few weeks. An RV park is a seasonal place to go, and I agree. I think it's going to be more like snowbirds, reverse snowbirds. People from the south are coming up here for the summer, then they're going back there for the winter. The other concern I have is, how are they going to control? I know they say they're going to have a tag on the car, your 200-day, 210 days, how do you control that? Is that 210 consecutive days? Or can they come for two months and then go away for a week, or two weeks, and then come back for another two months, until their 210 days are used up for the year? Is it 210 days per year? Or is it 210 consecutive days? And then the other one that I have, from what I understand, these units are going to be purchased? How is the maintenance on that handled? I mean, they're, what do they call them? RV, mobile, whatever. Are they going to be maintained? Because an RV, let's face it, an RV, if you purchase, if you purchase an RV in maybe 15 years, they look like crap. Are these going to look like crap in 15 years? I don't know. I'm asking, how is the maintenance on that handled? Those are just some of the questions and concerns I have. I know my two minutes are up.
Great questions, and that's why we're here. We're here to find answers. Okay, next up is Barbara Kickert. I got that one right?
Well, my name is Barbara Kickert. I live at 102 Hunt Drive. And I was listening to them say that they have these homes. They're not, they're mobile homes. The only reason why they're calling them mobile homes, they have tires. You know, when you take the tires off, then you've got a house. So I would like to know how it will affect our taxes, the traffic, all kinds of things. But I have a lot of concerns. How many of those homes going to be built over there? Are they going to have just homes, no RVs? Those are questions that I have, because I don't believe the homes themselves are a campsite amenity. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your questions. Okay, since we've gone through the question session, I want to notice-
Can I add one name? Can I add one point? Can I add my name to this?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Chuck Dale. I'm a geologist, and I have a question about the site preparation. How much of that area up there is shallow bedrock? How much is going to be torn up by construction in the way of putting in these individual lots? Or are they going to be razed? What's the influence going to be on drainage of construction? Is there going to be a lot of runoff? That's my question.
Thank you for your questions. Okay. You did not put your name down, but I will take your question as the last question in order to be fair to everybody who has put their name down. Here. You came in after, sir. Here. Yep, you can go there and state your name, so we can get it for the record, please.
Yes, hello, my name's Alistair Fraser. I live in Dussinberry Drive. I have a whole bunch of questions that come up. I do own an RV myself. It's permanently parked in Pennsylvania at a campground, so I know what code encroachment means and what it can be. Me myself, I've built a deck, a porch, storage facilities, all next to my RV. That's what's going to happen here. So I've seen the impact that can happen personally. I've done it. I own up to that. So, question. It was mentioned right at the start, the village ordinance or whatever, talked about preserving wildlife. How is the wildlife going to be handled that's up in this area? We get bears, deer, turkeys, everything, all the time, in, on Dussinberry Drive, through Dussinberry Drive, up through that land. Where is it going to go when you build this? I've walked my dog up through Black Bear Campground, there's deer, there's hundreds of deer all the time through there. How's that going to be impacted? I've got a big concern about the one-way-in, one-way-out, that's going to be a problem. I've heard the stories that the village fire department's not functioning properly at the moment. How's that going to be impacted with this there? The campfires, with, as was mentioned, forget the smoke, just the fire risk, and when we don't have a functioning village fire department. The light, the lights, the bleed, bleeding into the neighbors, that's obviously a concern. I'm sure that's going to be fine, but it is a concern. Mentioned also, trailers don't meet normal building code. They don't have to be, there's no codes that say you have to have outlets every eight feet, or you have to have studs every so often. They don't have studs that are there. Who is going to maintain that or verify that they're held up to a certain standard, and they're not going to be a hazard in several years? Because there's no code, there's no building code says it needs to be X, Y, and Z. Who's going to determine what that standard is? How's garbage going to be maintained? Or how are they going to handle garbage in and out? Again, bears all over the place here, and you've got 150 trailers, again, that's going to be a problem. The use of the facilities by visitors, can you walk in, pay 10 bucks, use the pool, play pickleball? I don't know. Can you? Background check for, for the owners or the guests there? That's fine. But when you invite someone in, who's doing a background check for your visitor, just because they came to join you for a camping day? That's not going to be done. And for the 210 days? Oh, that's fine, but who's to stop anyone parking on Bates Circle or Dussinberry and walking through the trees there? I walk through there all the time. There's no fence, no stopping. The tree line there doesn't stop squat. So, yeah. The environmental studies that were mentioned, where can we see those? Can they be copies of them obtained somewhere? Two other little things, has the Village of Florida approved this? I don't know.
It's not in the Village of Florida, sir. It's in the town of Warwick.
Okay, all right.
So falls under our jurisdiction.
Okay. Then also mentioned, mentioned was the water runoff. Yes, I mean, Dussinberry is, that mountain is all shale there. I dig down less than six inches, and I'm hitting solid shale. Already get those water issues, water runoff from that mountain. How's that going to be handled there? How's it going to be impacted by this stuff? Sorry for the lot of questions.
No problem. No problem, Mr. Fraser. Your questions are being addressed by our professionals. And thank you. You guys brought up some good questions. Okay, so now that we've gone through all the questions from the public, if you, yes, if anyone has any further questions that they think of tonight or any, anytime soon, you're more than welcome to address the planning board through our secretary in the planning department here in Town Hall. You can, you can send letters in to address any concerns or questions that you have. You're all welcome to do that and we do, and we welcome that. We appreciate that. So I'd like to let you know that. I'd also like to let the public know that the public hearing, as we're having tonight, will be continued on August 21st at 7:30 PM here in this room at Warwick Town Hall. So this is your notice. No further notice will be sent. So write down August 21st if you have any more questions or concerns, and you can submit written questions anytime you wish. So with that, we will move on to our next, we're going to take, we're going to take a break. We're going to make a motion to adjourn tonight?
Adjourn the public hearing.
Yes. So I need a motion from a board member to...
Whoa, whoa, whoa. That's the Board of the Board game again. Can you move the trustees and American attend to the public hearing?
No, Daniel, I'm sorry, we can't. That's, our schedules clash. I apologize for that, but that's when our schedule, the next meeting is.
You did that last time.
That is when the next meeting is, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? You can submit your comments in writing, Daniel. Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn the, adjourn the public hearing for now and continue it August 21st. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break so we can let the room clear and we can move on to our next agenda item.